Hello, hello.
Oh, good evening.
Good evening, Joe.
How are you? I'm doing all right. It's only Tuesday and it feels like it's gonna be a long week for me.
Be a long week for everybody. Hello, Laura, Kevin, Melissa. Nice to see you all.
Hey, Nick.
Hey, Nick.
Hello, Jennifer.
Am I the only one hearing all that?
What are you hearing exactly?
Lot of distortion.
It's pretty quiet on my, on my headphones.
I hear it.
We'll give it about another minute. I see some folks still trying to jump in. Well, it looks like everybody who's attending is now out of the waiting room and into the meeting. And if anybody joins now after seven thirty, I'll go ahead and let them in. But for those of you who are joining us on tonight's committee at the whole for November seventeenth, city council chambers are open to the public still. And if there is anybody there, you will be afforded the opportunity for public comment to address the city council on matters that are specifically on tonight's agenda. Members of the public present in city council chambers listening to the meeting will be provided that opportunity so long as they've signed in before seven thirty. And then members of the public who are wishing to speak via Zoom line, so long as you provided your name and the subject for which you'd like to speak about before the deadline, as noted on the agenda, you too will be afforded the opportunity to speak. And as always, written comments that were submitted prior to the meeting will be read after the topic was discussed by the city council and any members of the staff. We do ask that persons who speak, address the council as a whole and keep your comments to five minutes at length. Comments must be addressed to the city council as a whole through the mayor. And of course, profanity will not be accepted. For tonight, it looks like we have comparatively speaking from other committee of the holes, we only have five topics to get through. The first one is the comment annual report. Before I turn it over to Mr. Joe Turnage, I'm gonna ask Manager Crumstock if there's anything he'd like to lead off here first.
Thank you, Mayor and City Council. Obviously before you is Joe Turnage from ComEd. He's doing the annual report for the city of Rolling Meadows per described with between ComEd and all the municipalities. Joe has been our manager for a long time. He will be actually doing a PowerPoint presentation that Mayor, if you could open up the screen so he can walk you through, as we've always done with our annual reports, ask away on questions. Staff does meet with Joe at least quarterly, but sometimes depending on what the issues are, sometimes monthly. With that, that is our introduction from staff to Joe Turnage from ComEd to do the twenty nineteen annual report for the city of Rolling Meadows.
Thank you, Manager Crumstock and Mr. Turnage. We can absolutely see your screen.
Beautiful. Thank you, Barry. And thank you, Mayor and staff for having us join your Committee of the Whole meeting tonight. So as Barry said, I'll be going through the annual report. And you know, we do this, we do this every year. So you guys just let me know if you have any questions, comments or concerns at the end. And then I'll take note and like we always do, get back to you. All right, so I'm going into the report now. There we go. All right, so on the agenda for today, we're gonna talk about the twenty nineteen reliability. We're gonna talk about the different safe system enhancements that we've done. We're also gonna get into a little bit of the vegetation management items that we've done in twenty nineteen. So we're gonna talk a little bit about ComEd communication channels. And we're gonna conclude with the ComEd Smart Ready LED program. So this sheet right here outlines the reliability for twenty nineteen. And overall, the city of Rolling Meadows has experienced a ninety nine point ninety nine percent reliability rate in twenty nineteen. This, this top part is the system, the overall system interruptions that have occurred. And this bottom part is the customer average interruptions that have, that have taken place. This section here goes into a little bit more detail about the different types of outages that occurred. The purple, the purple bars that you see, if you look at the legend over here, that's for twenty nineteen. And these numbers along the bottom represents the, the different types of outages that occurred in twenty nineteen. As you can see, we had, we had quite a bit of underground equipment that occurred, zero point twenty three percent, so. But like I said, overall, you guys overall reliability was excellent in twenty nineteen. This here is, is the map of the different circuits in the, in Rolling Meadows. All right, now we're going into our system improvements for twenty nineteen. As you can see, we've had three circuits in which we've done some distribution automation installations on. And these are pretty much the, the automated switches, whereas if there's an outage in the town, these switches will identify a fault and they'll automatically close in, which in some cases gets power restored without the need of a trouble man going to the site. And if we go further down, we have three circuits in which we've installed some underground cable, replaced some underground cable, and we also installed some new fuses. All right, we have more system improvements. This, this sheet here, this outlines the different inspections that we've done in twenty nineteen. It also shows some of the circuits that we plan to inspect in twenty twenty. But in twenty nineteen, we did what we call a thermography. And with the thermography, that's where we go and we use a heat sensing device. And we patrol our circuits to identify hotspots on the circuit. And typically with these hotspots, that's the potential for an outage to occur because there's an arc of some sort causing it. And if we identify that, then we get though, we get that equipment replaced immediately to minimize any outages that may occur. All right, so now in twenty twenty, we have, we have two circuits that we plan to do some, some tree trimming to. I think we have some more on another page, but so in twenty twenty, as you can see, the two circuits there. Oh no, that's it. So we just have two circuits scheduled for twenty twenty so far. This sheet here, this pretty much outlines the different things that you can do with our, with our e-channels information, the, the social media, the mobile web, and of course, talking to a customer service rep. And we also have our, our outage alerts and notifications if you sign up for that. And of course, you can sign up with all of those things via these apps below. All right, so so far with our, with our e-channels metrics, if you go down to twenty nineteen, and I always look at Facebook first because I'm a Facebook user myself. We got a hundred and seventy one thousand, one hundred and seventy four Facebook fans. And that's as of twenty nineteen. And if you could, if you go back and you look at twenty fifteen, I'm still under a Facebook fan. You can see how that number has increased significantly. And if you look at the, if you jump over to where it says mobile app transactions, this tells me that, you know, based on these numbers, we're getting more folks that are doing things online as opposed to, as opposed to, I mean, they see that as another option as opposed to calling into the call center to report these things, outages and so forth. We had, if we look at twenty fifteen versus twenty nineteen, as far as the mentions of ComEd online, we had two hundred thousand mentions of ComEd back in twenty fifteen. And so now we are at fifty four thousand, six hundred and twenty seven, so. I don't know what's causing that per se, but hopefully it's a good thing. I'm guessing back in twenty fifteen, we were, we were doing some different things. From what I understand, we made some very big improvements since twenty fifteen versus now. And so, so that's what I'm gonna allocate that number towards, that decrease at least. All right, so this is the report that shows the, the call center matrix. And if you look down, down below, you'll see that we have, we have more customers that are going through our VRU system, and that's the voice response unit, as opposed to waiting online to speak to a customer service representative. And when you, when you do get to speak to a representative, we're taking approximately three hundred and thirty nine seconds to handle customers. And if you look back over time, and I'm going back to twenty fifteen again, we was at three hundred and one seconds and now we're at an average of three hundred and thirty nine. And that's primarily caused because we're spending more time making sure that we handled a customer's inquiry on the first call and doing our best to eliminate additional calls into the call center. So, so we're doing our due diligence to handle, take care of each customer on the first call. Okay, our, our street light report. So we've installed, we've, we've actually installed, we've almost finished the program. So we have all, we have seven remaining lights that we'll still need to install smart nodes to. And we plan to have those seven completed by the end of this year. So once, once we complete the remaining seven, then we'll be a hundred percent done with, with Rolling Meadows as far as the streetlight program. All right, that ends my report. Any questions?
Thank you, Joe. With that, council members, if you do have any questions, raise your hand now and then we'll address them. Alderman O'Brien.
Thanks, Mr. Mayor. And thanks, Joe, for the great information, Joe. I know you mentioned at the beginning, you were gonna talk about some of the vegetation program. That's probably one thing I've received calls on, and I've worked closely with Director Horn and some of the staff and the people from Davie. Could you give, long story short, is we were told there were about six or eight residents that had called me that it, to my eye and their eye, the, the tree branches are in the wires. So we've had ComEd out, we've had Davie out, we've had, I think, a third party out. And we're told it's a tier two problem and that ComEd doesn't touch until tier three, which in full transparency, I appreciate the honesty from the gentleman from Davie. I think it was, say, hey, regrettably, it's once a line comes down, they'll fix it. So I said, there's no proactive things that you guys wanna call during a storm and say, hey, we're without power versus being prepared. Can you just take a little bit of time and explain, I think it's tier one, two and three in terms of vegetation control?
Well, so we have a cycle in which we trim trees. And typically when we trim, we only trim in the primary zone. So, so let me ask, before I go further, the, the trees that are in question, are they in the, the top three lines of ComEds? Or are they running along the secondary lines of ComEds?
I'm gonna defer to your expertise on it with the team. They said it was tier two. That's where I was getting the tier, but these branches to my eye and all the residents that call me are way above into the third line, but we'll defer to obviously your guys' expertise. But to the eye, it looks to be in the third or above, but they did keep referencing two like you just did. That was the terminology they used.
Okay, cuz typically we, we do a cycle trim around the primary lines, which is typically the top three, the twelve KV voltages. So now the, the other lines, which is the secondary ones, it's not that we're, we, we actually don't trim around those because of sometimes those are going straight to the customers and things like that. And we actually rely on customers to maintain their vegetation around their secondary lines. But if a customer is out of power as a result of a tree coming down on the secondary, of course, we won't leave it. So we'll come out and do what we have to do to get the customer back up. In some cases, we may remove the, the rubbish that we take down. Or in some cases, because, because it's the customer secondary, we might leave it up to the customer to take it away. It just depend on how much and things like that.
Great. Thank you for the clarification. That was one of the top questions I'd received during the storms and people looking at the damage and stuff afterwards. So I appreciate it. Thank you.
Oh, no problem. Thank you.
That's all, Mr. Mayor. Thank you.
All right, thanks, Alderman O'Brien. I see Alderman Cannon.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor, and thank you for your report, Joe. Question is, last year, Joe, when you were in, I asked two questions. I have yet to get an answer back from either you or staff. The two questions I had last year was, what can we do to get some of the lights that you've changed out? Higher voltage, higher wattage? And the other one was, I had asked about possibility of getting four streetlights, two on each side of the new fire stations. I was told by staff that would work with you and come back with some answers. I haven't heard anything over a year now. So I was wondering if you might have any information on either of those items tonight?
I know for the, I think you mentioned the adding streetlights on the side of the, on the side of the, the police, I'm sorry, the fire department. Those, I'll have to go to staff, well, staff and I will definitely have to get together because there is a process for adding streetlights. So to answer your question, two streetlights can definitely be added. It's just a matter of what it takes to get it done. And then I'll have to speak with staff and I'll have to work together to try to see what, what will work best for, for the village.
Okay, just, just, Joe, Joe, just for clarification, it was two on each side of the new fire station on Hicks. So it'd be four total.
Gotcha, okay.
Thank you.
Oh, no problem. I'm just taking notes as you're talking there. So if I'm not looking, it's because I'm writing too. Okay, and as far as the higher, the higher wattages, we do have bulbs that, that can, that we can increase the wattage on. Only thing is, I know that for some of the residents, they've had some issues with that higher wattage bulb, where we've had to go back out and remove it. So I'm thinking that if it's in an area where it's darker and, and correct me if I'm wrong, because I recall having a conversation about an area that is east of the, east of the city hall. Is that the same area that we're talking about? I'm sorry, it'll be west of the city hall. I'm sorry.
The ones I was talking about specifically were on, on Quentin for one. But there was other ones on Main Streets that I think really need to be higher wattage. You know, I can tell you, I've had people in the work tell me that they don't think the new lights are even as bright as the old ones in a lot of cases. I know that sounds, might sound odd to you, but they're really not. I have one in front of my own house. It's surely not stronger than the old one. It's more efficient, but it's not a powerful light on it, that's for sure.
All right, so I'll tell you what I'll do. I'll, I'll give staff a call tomorrow. And, and then we'll see if we can get those, get those taken care of. If they know the specific ones, I mean, and even if I have to call you directly, I can do that also. That way we make sure that we address each one of the ones that are in question for you.
Great. I appreciate your concern. Thank you.
No problem.
Thanks, Alderman Cannon. Any other questions from members of the council or comments? Well, doesn't look like there's any further questions or comments. I wanna say I appreciate getting the ComEd alerts, especially last Tuesday's wind and weather advisory alerts. Was fearful that we're gonna lose a lot of power then, but I also appreciate you giving us the update on this presentation.
All right, thank you, Mr. Mayor and thank you, Council. And Alderman Cannon, I'll be in touch with you about those, about the lights.
Great, thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you. So with that, it looks like we can move on now to the next item, which is the review of the city of Rolling Meadows website. And for this, we're gonna have IT and specifically Wassim provide a PowerPoint presentation. So Wassim, whenever you're ready, the controls are available for the monitor.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. Let me go ahead and request control one moment. All right, can everyone see my screen?
Looks good. Yep.
Thank you. Thank you again, Mr. Mayor. Thank you to the council for giving IT the opportunity to provide a update on the city's website. As you know, the website, our city address is www.ciderm.org. And the current website was brought online back in twenty fifteen. We do have an update scheduled for twenty twenty one to redesign the site with our current website hosting company, which is Civic Plus. While IT is responsible for the general housekeeping of the site, the updates are actually a group effort with each department adding and updating their own content. As you can see by this slide, the traffic on our website has increased almost ten percent from last year. All this data is as of January first to last week when the council packet was sent out. With the increase in website traffic, you could see that the, our online presence is increasing every year, which is great because that gives us a direction as people are logging on to our website to get information and updates about the community. While we do have a popular social media presence as well, the fact that our website traffic is going up in addition to our social media following is definitely a good sign. As you can see, our average daily users are up too. The average daily visit shows an increase in visits, which is daily visitors on, is the foundation of many of our other traffic and engagement metrics. Daily unique visitors is an estimation of the active users seen in one day visiting a website on both mobile and desktop platforms. The average action taken, page views, downloads, outlooks and internal site searches, as you can see, the number is low, which is where we wanna be. What this means is that people are able to get to the final destination on our site, be it a link or a download with fewer clicks. An example of this is someone goes onto our how-to pages, looks for a online search and clicks on the link for our utility billing. That is considered a action and with that being done in less clicks is optimal, which means people are able to find links quicker, making the site more efficient. And visitors don't have to click around on the website to find information. As you can see on this slide, the primary browser language used in the past year has been English, going to Spanish afterwards, with Japanese, Korean and Chinese translation afterwards. This site page shows the top most visited pages in twenty twenty, which includes our main website homepage, online payments, our COVID page, utility billing, the Rolling Meadows Police Department welcome page, our minimum power test requirements for the police, utility payment process, refuse and recycling, and our police blotter. This page shows our most viewed dates for the year, including the last two years as well. This takes us to our main website homepage. Our homepage is separated into several sections. What I'm going to go through is into each section, giving a high level overview of the information available on the pages. So on this link where we have government, we have our agendas, board commission councils, board member information, links to department pages, city's broadcasting network, along with city emergency management pages. Right next to that is our services link where we have services provided by the city or links where services can be found, such as senior handyman programs along with public work services, COVID nineteen utility billing, as well as public works. The our community page is the community events. Information can be found here along with links to other entities such as the library, park district, and general information on Rolling Meadows and the city's newsletter can be found here as well. The business link gives information for new businesses and helpful information for existing businesses, such as links to bids, permits and taxes can be found here as well. The how-do-I link is a quick way to find items that may not be on our homepage. That includes applying for applications, contacting our city council, finding code ordinances, learning about crime prevention, garage sales, online payment requests, signing up for notification newsletters, or even viewing our financial reports, calendars or city maps or police bladders. Right underneath that first tab, we have our citizen request, online payments, government transparency and stay notified. This information, the citizen request, allows residents to submit questions and concerns to the city. Public works and community developments have the highest request with a total of six hundred and forty one and ninety one respectively since about mid twenty fifteen. The online payment, which includes utility billing, food and beverage tax, motor fuel and other payment information is where it can be done through this link. The government transparency link, this includes any financial and civic related information, such as city council information, meeting information, FOIA applications, budgets, audits, expenditures, salaries, contracts and other information as well. The stay notified link is where someone can sign up using their email or phone number to be emailed or texted information about the city's website, such as job notices, RFPs, bids and newsletter updates. Right underneath that section, we have our news and calendar. The news and calendar gives pretty much the upcoming information or event, which is not located anywhere else on the website unless if you click on the Rolling Meadows News button. The Rolling Meadows calendar, as indicated, gives a listing of events such as meetings and community events that's happening in the city. The quick links is our most popular pages that are accessed by our users. So we went ahead and created a special link so people can go to those directly instead of going through any of the other links that we just went through. The quick links include COVID nineteen, our agendas, city employment opportunities, Rolling Meadows Business Buzz, construction projects, FOIA requests, interactive maps, water quality reports and our Welcome to Rolling Meadows video. Right underneath that is our community portal. This is where you can enter an address and find specific information as far as related to an address. This is tied into our TAS data where you could find information such as refuse information, property information, tax information, township, local official information. So this is a great way where you can find that information pertaining to a specific address based on our interaction with our TAS consortium. In summary, our website is a highly utilized tool, which is used by the community and the city, does take advantage of that and makes the best effort to ensure the latest up-to-date information is always available. Kelly, our assistant administrator for the city of Rolling Meadows is the primary lead on our website and does a fantastic job maintaining and updating it and is always looking for new ways to enhance the city, the site, to make sure it's always refreshed. That's pretty much it for the overview. If the council would like to have a more in-depth or personalized store, any one of our IT help desk. staff members would be more than happy to assist. If you have any questions, I am available to answer them right now, or you could always call or email the helpdesk at your convenience.
Thanks, Wassim, thanks for the presentation. I'm surprised that the agenda page didn't make the cut for the top visited pages, but that just might be my bias. Are there any questions or comments from council on the tour that we just received? Alderman Suneika?
Thanks, Mr. Mayor. Maybe I missed it, but was there any data about how many residents or how many visitors are subscribing to the various alert systems that the city site provides?
That was not included in the slideshow, but we could certainly provide that to you.
Thanks, I think that would be a useful insight to see if that's something that's utilized or something that we can maybe push forward in the future.
Thank you, Alderman Suneika. I thought I saw another hand up, but it seems like it's disappeared now. Are there other questions or comments? If not, I appreciate the information, Wassim, and again, the tour of the site and look forward to seeing the updates when staff provides them for each department. So with that, we'll move on to the next item, which is the Rolling Meadows Business Buzz website. While we're still on the conversation of websites, I believe this is going to be both Martha and Lori. Don't know which one would prefer the web, the screen sharing capabilities first. So whoever does, it's open for the taking.
Well, thank you, this is Martha Corner, and Lori and I are both here in City Hall, available to answer questions at the end of the meeting. So we are kind of a tag team on the presentation tonight, and we've been part of a larger team on this effort in general. I'm just going to quickly run through a few overview comments for informational purposes on the website, and then we'll take you for a little walk through it. This is a new feature, this is a new initiative by the city. Generally speaking, we are doing this to benefit all businesses in the community free of charge to improve their visibility and to hopefully drive traffic to their locations. So that being said, this was an effort to immediately support the city businesses during tough economic times. Secondly, we are attempting to continue to align our initiatives with the Rolling Meadows Economic Development Committee, and again, to find ways to collaborate and support the business community. The third item is to make sure that the city is able to design and maintain the website, and we are accomplishing that as we go forward. This is a work in progress. And finally, to keep this effort affordable for the city in particular because it was an unexpected expense due to the COVID-19 impacts. So how is the web design firm chosen? We did extensive research on business websites in other communities, and we believe that we found a very good example to follow, which is the Elmhurst City Center website. We contacted their staff and learned more about how it was created. And then to follow appropriate city procedures, we did solicit three separate bids. Before we solicited those bids, we defined what we were trying to accomplish. Again, objectives to ultimately implement and maintain the site within a budget, to train city staff to maintain the site as needed, and also to obtain the necessary data to optimize search engine analytics and professional feedback. These long-term goals and objectives were discussed with the city's Economic Development Committee and in depth with newer staff here in the City Hall. Again, the lowest responsible time-sensitive bidder was awarded as this was an urgent priority that we wanted to implement at low expense. So we solicited bids from three firms, knowing what our criteria were. First, we reached out to Civic Plus, which is the city's current website provider, and they're a municipal-focused website company. Secondly, we contracted Intrinsic Marketing. They currently support the Rolling Meadows Chamber of Commerce's business website, RMTalk. That website is available to chamber members and non-members, but also to non-city businesses that are listed on the site. Intrinsic Marketing is located in Chicago, and the owner is a Rolling Meadows resident. Finally, we contacted Divine Design and Marketing, and we ultimately selected Divine Design for a variety of reasons. They were able to deliver on this very time-sensitive project, and we did complete the execution during early October. They did have a lowest reported bid with our specific criteria for approximately $1,800. Also, they'll be receiving about 150 per month if they use the additional four hours of necessary site edits and updates. We liked their ideas on how to keep the website fresh and engaging, and they have been able to move forward with the city's long-term desired goals and objectives of this website. They have been very generous with extra hours to exceed our expectations, to meet the deadline, and to produce the most professional and accurate information on the website. Finally, Divine Design is a Rolling Meadows-based business, and the owner is also a resident. Now I'm going to turn it over to Lori to talk more about how we're marketing this website. Thank you.
Good evening, everybody. Marketing the new site to local businesses in the community was done to more than 850 of Rolling Meadows businesses, asking for their participation to include more detailed information and special offers in the, in the new site. A simplistic Google form application was used to collect the necessary data from the businesses. The businesses were notified of the new website in the following ways. An email blast using the MailChimp platform, a standard email invitation with the business flyer shown here, an article in the Business Messenger newsletter that is sent to more than 800 city businesses via the 2021 business license mailings. This flyer was also included. And Martha and I are diligently doing follow-up calls and visits to dining and retail locations to encourage coupon participation and just participation in general. So the businesses were thrilled to see the city's effort to assist them during these challenging economic times. Thank you. Divine Design Marketing did a great job designing the site to be engaging, simplistic, and easy to navigate. So our local business community response was very encouraging. All city businesses do have a listing in the, in the directory section of the new website. They are free to opt out at any time. Currently, 41 businesses have completed the application to include additional information in addition to their standard directory listing. Happy to report that 25 businesses so far are offering a high-value coupon in the special offers section on the site. Again, staff is consistently working to increase the participation in this section. Three area job postings are listed from the city businesses at this time as well. So marketing to the residents in the community. To effectively do this, we started, the launch of the site happened right around October 16th. And we did this via ads that were posted on the city's website homepage, Facebook pages, and electric signs. This, these actions will continue for many months. An article in the monthly News and Views community newsletter was done. Flyers have been posted in City Hall and other partner locations. A December utility mailing to all residents included a reduced version of this flyer. And we intend to hand this flyer out at any city events, you know, upcoming in the near, in the near future. At this point, Martha and I would like to briefly highlight the main features of our new site, so I'm going to hand it back to Martha.
Okay, this is the new website. I'm just going to quickly walk through it and show you the main features of the website. Again, we're very excited about this group effort. This is the main page, and up in to the left corner is essentially the Business Buzz logo. You'll see that on different social media as well as the city website. We try to keep it seasonal, so obviously this first page has an autumnal theme.
Martha?
Yeah?
Are you showing us the actual website at this point in time?
Hold on one second. Bear with us. Okay, now can you see the website?
Yes, now here we go.
My apologies.
That's okay.
So again, in the upper left of the screen is the official Business Buzz logo. That's what we're carrying throughout our marketing materials and our social media links to this location. And the current theme is autumnal. You can obviously see the color scheme with green and blue and other shades that are consistent with other city marketing media. So there are five main areas of the site. There's this homepage, there's the directory, and businesses are listed alphabetically, and then we've broken them down into six categories of shopping, dining, construction, services, health and wellbeing, and others, which we found difficult to categorize. The dining section is one of our popular areas to look up the area businesses. And you can see here that they're listed alphabetically with their location information, their website address. And if they did decide to opt in to the location or the participation of the website, we receive further information. So on that note, I'm going to go down to Cola Coiled Cafe. And in this case, they provided more information on what makes their business great here, and then they provided a coupon, which is their high-value special offer. This is something that people can take a picture with a cell phone or print the coupon, take it to the location, and benefit from this new site. Okay, now we have the special offers, which is, I think, one of the funnest areas of the site. These are all the businesses that have offered high-value coupons. You can see it's across a range of industries, services, retail, retail, it's services. As we continue down, you can see the wide variety of participation here. And these coupons were making essentially available through April of 2021. But again, we're getting traction from businesses throughout the community as we're going forward. And we're finding out that these coupons are being redeemed. So this is all very good, and businesses are grateful that they're having the opportunity at no charge to drive traffic to their locations. So. Go back here. And on the what's new section, we feature community events, a business of the month showcase, job opportunities, and business accolades, and I'll walk through these with you. These are the community events that are currently lining up for the upcoming weeks, including the Rolling Meadows Police Department Food Drive. And I think that's about it for now. Then we have the business of the month. This month, we have Grande Jakes. We've had the benefit of leveraging content from our professional newsletter writer, Ryan McKeon. So this article basically was updated from something that appeared in the Business Messenger recently. And Grande Jakes, again, appreciated the opportunity to give us permission to run this business of the month spotlight. Not sure it's not working. Okay, job opportunities. Thus far, we have touching hearts at home. We have stadium club, we have Dunkin' Donuts. And again, we welcome any new information on job opportunities in the City of Rolling Meadows. Then, business accolades, what we're trying to do again is to establish the support of the city for the businesses here in Rolling Meadows and to leverage what they're contributing to the community at large. So this article, again, was something that appeared in other media that the city has produced professionally. It's a list of businesses that have provided either food or PPE equipment to the city during this COVID occurrence. And then lastly, if anybody wants to contact the city to learn more about the website or to provide comments and suggestions, they can contact the business advocate either by mail, email specifically to me, and this is my direct phone number. So that is the website. Go ahead, we're going to go back to the presentation, and Lori's going to talk about metrics.
So how has the buzz been received by the public? The website analytics as provided by Divine Design Marketing indicate a very successful start for the first month. These reports cover the timeframe from September 30th to November 16th. And basically, the dates correspond to spikes in the timeline, and these dates are October 16th was the first notice of the site's new launch that went out in an email to the city council, Economic Development Committee, city staff, and Chamber of Commerce. So you'll kind of notice by October 16th, that's the first spike. On October 19th through the 21st, the new site was first revealed to the public via the city's Facebook pages, website, and electric signs. And then on November 1st, residents received notice via the utility billing buck slip and news and views, while businesses received notice via the business license renewals and the Business Messenger. And then since after November 1st, just a healthy, consistent number of views can be noted along this timeline. I'll do a real quick recap of the definition of some of these analytics. Wassim has also done that as well. But to date, we have 549 users, which is people who have visited the site. That's very good for the first month of existence. New users are basically people who have visited the site one time and have not revisited. Sessions are the period of time that a user is active on the site. If there is inactivity after a certain amount of time, it is then counted as another session once they go back on. Page views are the number of clicks, pages clicked per session. Currently, we stand at 3,269, which is another very solid number that demonstrates users are clicking around. In this case, on average, a user is visiting more than three pages on the site, which is very good. Pages per session is the average number of pages viewed per session. The average session duration is how long a user stays engaged on the site. Currently, we're at 2 minutes 49 seconds, and it's a very healthy amount of time to be active on a site, especially a newer site. The bounce rate is the percentage of all sessions on the site in which users viewed only a single page, did not engage, and then left. When this happens, the bounce rate increases. If a user continues on to another page, the bounce rate decreases. So for us, Divine Design has informed us that the 47.05% is incredible for a new site. Over 50% of users looked at more than one page, which is very solid and a great number for the first month. So the page visit overview is the next slide that we're looking at. It's pretty basic. The homepage has received the most number of visits at 752, and the business directory comes in next at 295, dining directory at 206, and the special offers slash coupons 161. So these are the top four most visited pages. So in general, a very good amount of visitors to the homepage, a healthy, heavy use of dining directory and special offer pages, which is great news for the businesses and restaurants in particular, especially during these tough times. Visitors are spending the most time on the special offers page, which is about two minutes. And as a result of this feedback, it would behoove staff to continue to work on increasing coupon offerings from restaurants and all applicable businesses, since it proves to be a big draw for this site. And then the final metric page that we're looking at. And then the final, uh, metric page that we're looking at is the top channels used to visit the site. It's pretty basic. Um, direct has, uh, led most visitors to this at 45.6. Social media is 25.1, uh, which is a very important number because it's, it's going to be the best avenue and the easiest for the city to advertise, um, in order to, to get that sort of response. Referral is at 19.6, and then an organic search is 9.7%.
So we're gonna conclude by just talking about the staff time commitment to this project. Again, Divine Design, uh, was key to, uh, getting this website, uh, designed and, um, up and running. Going forward, we are going to be receiving training from Divine Design, and we'll be ensuring that general information on the businesses remain current in the directory. We'll be able to update coupon values and expiration dates as needed. We can post upcoming event information for the city and local partnering organizations. We can ensure the city business job postings remain current. We can continue to gather and update material and content for the business of the month and the business accolades tabs, and continue to encourage participation for businesses, especially the special offers, events, and job postings. And we will regularly advertise the Rolling Meadows Business Buzz on the city and partnering marketing platforms. So that concludes our presentation. It's an informational overview of the website. People are, uh, receiving this very well, and, um, it's been a good project. It's been a fun project. We encourage any comments, questions, and suggestions from the city council at this time. Thank you.
Thank you, Martha. Thank you, Lori, for, uh, providing the presentation here and sharing some of the details on this. Are there any questions or comments from members of the council? Alderman Sanoyka?
Thanks, Mr. Mayor. So I know that at the very beginning, we were mentioning how the, the city website has a section for businesses and that there's the, um, site that's hosted by the Chamber of Commerce called RM Talk. Um, can you clarify again the, the strategic use of this third medium outside of the city's social media and website, um, or the Chamber of Commerce or other avenues, um, for, for this item?
Well, again, this, this website is specific to all businesses in the City of Rolling Meadows, and that being in that they're geographically located in the city. And our goal was to list the directory of the businesses with their websites and other information to, um, improve the visibility to the broader community. And then also, at no expense to the businesses themselves and at a low cost to the city, allow them to, uh, provide special offers and again, opportunities to drive traffic to their businesses. So it's unique in that it's, um, it's, it's managed and initiated by the city, and it's a relatively low cost at no expense to the, um, the businesses. Finally, it is, um, the, the city is the, um, governmental oversight and body of this, of this website.
Is there, um, a long-term strategy to, uh, combine this avenue or, or this design with the, um, branding or updates that Wassim had mentioned in the earlier item of with the city website?
You know, I think that basically that's something that we're, we're, we are working on going forward. Um, we will admit that this was sort of a hasty initiative, but we didn't anticipate COVID-19, uh, but we did want to do something. And one of the, one of the, uh, uh, initiatives or excuse me, causes for the impetus of this project was the city council asking that we do something. Um, so we decided to do this. But yes, going forward, uh, absolutely, we will look at this strategically and in a longer-term perspective. And talk to the economic development committee. We've had extensive, uh, discussions on this topic.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you, Alderman Sanoyka. If, if I can ask a quick question, uh, what was the deciding factor to separate or bifurcate this platform from using our current city website, uh, building a page and then having sub-pages for each vendor? Um, what, what is, what was the deciding factor to do that, to separate the two?
We did obtain a bid from Civic Plus, but it was significantly more expensive to work from that platform than to have a, a, a separate website developed for this purpose, which includes a directory and the, um, coupon offers, et cetera. Divine Design has used a platform that is common for this type of purpose. Um, but it is a dot org website, and it is owned and, uh, operated by the city.
It's, it's a WordPress, uh, template and very user-friendly, which enabled city staff to be able to tr, train on it, uh, quickly and effectively.
That's a universal standard provided.
Yeah, I, I noticed those WordPress site. And so my next question was based on the fact that, uh, there are anticipated updates to the page. Are you allowing the participating businesses to manage their own page, uh, to minimize the amount of time that, uh, Divine Design has to spend, uh, producing these updates?
No, this is, uh, this is owned and managed by the city.
Yeah.
Goal going forward is that staff can easily update this information, much like we do with the current city website, when we update, you know, events, lists, et cetera, all throughout the departments of the city.
So we do not anticipate spending more than that $150 a month for Divine Design to produce any work inside this site?
We do not.
Okay. Alderman Cannon?
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. I guess just, uh, one of the things I was thinking about as we're going through all of this, maybe down the line as we get a better handle on this whole program, maybe we might want to consider at the end of it to ask to offer, um, available business real estate that's available in the City of Rolling Meadows, because sometimes we're not aware that a business is outgrowing their needs. It might be helpful if they knew that there was other business properties available in town. Just a suggestion. Thank you.
Thank you very much. We'll consider that.
Thank you, Alderman Cannon. I see Alderman O'Brien?
Thanks, Mr. Mayor. And just to, to add to what, uh, the questions yourself and Alderman Sanoyka spoke to too, is this was heavily discussed, and Alderman Veniziano can jump in also if I miss anything at the EDC. And one of the things Attorney Wolf attended a couple of the EDC meetings, and there was concern about who maintained ownership of the material if it wasn't hosted on the, uh, city website. So the agreement at the EDC was we'll get a year under her belt, look at the traction, the analytics that are going to be provided, and then compare that to the potential RM Talk. That was the other vendor that came in. Uh, once we did rule out the Civic one, because the price was just extraordinary for what we were looking to do in a quick turnaround time. And then so what we did decide to do from an EDC perspective is it's just a year commitment with Divine Design. Take a look at the analytics, the bang for the buck, get some feedbacks from businesses, and then we review it again. Do we keep it going? Or like we had mentioned, it's $1,800 times the $150 per month. So it was certainly, uh, very affordable compared to RM Talk and where they're at. But that was some of the concern when we brought Attorney Wolf in, is who owns the data should something happen? And this allowed the city to maintain more of that, since we issued a business license, we're the, the baseline, um, for the, for the source, for the, the documentation. A lot of that was, that was weighed into that. But EDC did ask for analytical updates, um, as often as we can get them, and then do a compare at the end of the year and see if it's worthwhile going forward, or potentially partnering with RM Talks or another vendor that might have something out there as well. So that's just kind of from the EDC perspective, where we were asking it to, to look towards from a strategic perspective also.
Uh, thanks for sharing that.
Absolutely.
That's nice. What, what are some of the, the key indicators that will define success a year from now? What is it?
Some of the SEO stuff, the search engine optimization, the number of hits, um, compared from that, as well as, I think a lot of it's the feedback from the businesses that are out there. Are they getting a return on the free coupons? As I think it was Martha had noted, is that they are tracking them, because that was one of the things we asked for. Obviously, there's no tracking or barcode on there. Um, that was something we did try and get incorporated, but it wasn't available, we done on the timeframe. And so a lot of it is the return. I know it's free, but I'm gonna use the word return on investment, uh, for the businesses, is that they are seeing business uptake go through. That was one of the main measurements. So it is good to hear that Martha and Lori are hearing from businesses that the coupons are being redeemed, because that was one of the main ones we were looking for. Not just the number of hits. It's great to get hits, but if nobody follows through and goes to any of the, the restaurants or businesses in town, is it really worth the ROI? So it was good to hear that the ones that I do have coupons out there are tracking the use of them.
Nice. Thank you. I do see Alderman, uh, Alderman Cannon, then Bud Matts. Okay, Alderman Bud Matts.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. So, um, this is not my area of expertise at all, but based on what I saw earlier, it sounded like Divine Design was providing you with the metrics as to how many people are visiting the site and, and, and how long they're staying at the site and that kind of thing. But, but, um, but in a year, we're gonna make a decision if we keep using Divine Design for this service, um, based on the metrics that they're providing. So is there a way to get independent metrics? I, I don't know anything about it, other than to say, uh, that they have invested interest in, in, in how they report these metrics to us. So how do we find independent numbers that are telling us that this is working or not working, other than finding out if people are actually using the coupons that are being put in? So I'm just asking, because I have no knowledge of these kinds of things.
So let me answer the question. Um, in our selection of the design firm, one of the things that we did, uh, consider is our, our ability as staff to gather the data, and we are to be trained to do so.
Yeah, it, it looks like the actual analytics or the metrics are coming from Google Analytics. What Divine Design did is created a property for this website to pull those metrics, and the city should definitely have access to that Google Analytics page. Um, that's, that's what, uh, Divine Design is using.
Okay, thank you.
Alderman Veniziano?
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. So to piggyback a little bit off of Alderman O'Brien, um, we did have extensive conversations at EDC about this. Um, and one of my biggest concerns, um, and, and that I still do have, uh, with this website is, um, you know, the amount of hours that staff is gonna put into this. So I understand, you know, Divine Design is, is giving us four hours included in our, um, monthly fee. Um, but, uh, the concern was is, uh, after that four hours, um, or in, uh, in cooperation with that four hours, how many hours, um, is staff spending, um, on this? Uh, and the hard part, and I don't know if we've really gotten an answer at this point, is how do we know if this is beneficial or not and, and worth the money, um, with just the Divine Design or the website cost aside with just staff time as well? And I'm not sure how we account for that. Um, and maybe Martha and Lori or Manager Crumstock, you can help answer that at this point. But that is, is still a big concern, at least as far as I'm concerned.
Well, we can begin to track it, you know, as staff, but we're, we're guessing that we'll be spending about one to two hours per week, um, each on this effort.
Obviously, the launch was a lot more time-consuming.
Very labor-intensive.
But now that it is up and going, basically, uh, you know, the hard work for us will just be, uh, talking to businesses. Martha's talking to many of them already. I am as well, uh, to see if we can get more participation. But we foresee one to two hours per week on an average.
Okay, so is it unreasonable to, to kind of request tracking of that? Because like we've said at the EDC, again, we, we said, you know, we're, we're, uh, municipality, we're not in, um, a business of running a, you know, a website and a technology firm and all of that. Um, and so if this is costing more than the return, um, and the businesses are only getting a few coupons here and there, at what point do we kind of cut ties? And I know we've had that conversation at the EDC level as well. Um, and so my fear is, is if we wait the full year, how much time and money have we wasted potentially in staff hours? So I would really like to review this really in six months, um, to see if we can have that, those kind of numbers put together.
Not a problem.
Thank you. That's all I have right now.
Thank you, Alderman Veniziano. Um, Alderman O'Brien, I saw your hand shoot up and then pop down, so I don't know.
I was just gonna say, no, I appreciate it, Mr. Mr. Mayor. It's maybe just a follow-up on that, because Alderman Veniziano is exactly right. That was a big concern we had. And I think it'd just be hard, and I'm sure Martha and Lori, you guys can put your heads together, is that I'm guessing this might just become part of your regular routine as you're doing the business visits. And so I don't know if it's for every hour that you talk with a business, it's a half an hour gets allocated to the buzz. That's something that I, I think Alderman Veniziano hit on the key point. That is something, as you guys know from the EDC, we want to track. I just, I, I know it's probably gonna be hard to do, because I imagine just when you do a regular check-in with one of the businesses, this will just become part of the, the conversation. So I appreciate you doing that. And then, uh, yeah, any metrics or stuff we can get would be perfect.
Yeah, and it, it already is, uh, becoming part of our conversations when we, we, um, interact with the businesses. It's part of materials that I carry around with me to provide to, um, indicate that we're very supportive of the business community. Well-received. Um, again, I think it's gonna get more traction going forward. And obviously, we like to use our time efficiently, so I think it's, uh, it's a work in progress.
Great. Thanks so much.
Thank you, Alderman O'Brien. Uh, thank you, Lori, Martha. Are there additional comments or questions from the council on this topic? If not, it looks like we'll keep moving from the, uh, city's website to the Business Buzz website. Both of them have events located on them. Uh, this next subject is in line with that for the events in 2021, and hopefully we can start seeing events in 2021 being published on all of our platforms. So with that, I think Lori, uh, this is gonna be your, your presentation.
That is correct. We'd like to, uh, propose the 2020 community event lineup for the City of Rolling Meadows. With the cancellation of most events in 2020, other than four city markets, staff is prepared to view this 2021 calendar as fluid, responsive, and proactive to what is happening around us in respect to the COVID pandemic. We will again note on all event calendars advertised that event dates are subject to cancellation or postponement at any time due to COVID-19 precautions and/or government mandates. Occurring events will again implement new social distancing and sanitization precautions to maximize health and safety for all attendees. Um, with the city markets, because they were deemed as essential, we anticipate that the city markets will indeed take place next year. We're happy to invite the city council back for the meet and greets at some or all of the markets. We do, however, suggest changing the time to, from, uh, 2:12 to 1:00 p.m. to engage more visitors at this busier time of the day. Um, any comments or feedback on, on that request? Okay, so with the new events and event changes, real quick, we'd like to see the revamped St. Pat's Dinner event happen again, or happen, not again, because it wasn't able to, in 2021 on Saturday, March 13th, partnering with the Park District as in the past. We'd also like to consider the Halloween Kickoff and Kirchhof event with a tentative date of Saturday, October 30th. And then hopefully, we're able to host the Veterans Dinner in November prior to the Veterans Day holiday. Obviously, we remain hopeful that the nation returns to normal sooner than later. Staff will be proactive in 2021 to all community event adjustments, postponements, or cancellations as deemed necessary by the city and or state. Are there any questions? Thank you for your time and have a nice evening.
Thank you, Lori. It looks like Alderman O'Brien does have a question for you.
Okay.
Thanks, Mr. Mayor. Yeah, just blame it on me, Lori, for raising my hand a couple seconds late. Um, I did receive similar calls and feedback to Alderman Veniziano's after our last council meeting, that what a huge hit. People, I know it just fell, Halloween fell on a Saturday, but for the Halloween kickoff, are we envisioning potentially keeping trick-or-treating on a Saturday? I know the event's scheduled for the 30th based on the draft calendar, but is that in your mind someplace? Because I, I think I would be in support of it, is that people that gave feedback loved the Saturday. As Alderman Veniziano said, the pictures that went in the window turned into a little bit of a scavenger hunt for the kids. As Alderman Veniziano said, the pictures that went in the window turned into a little bit of a scavenger hunt for the kids. Is I'd be in support based on resident feedback to always keep on a Saturday? I don't know if that was part of your plan or it was just the event on the 30th leading to trick-or-treating on the 31st.
So Mayor O'Brien, uh, excuse me, sorry, Alderman O'Brien.
I'll gladly leave that with Mr. Gallo.
But, um, the idea is really to have the Saturday event and then keep regular trick-or-treating on October 31st. So we did receive feedback from a bunch of the Kirt Off Road folks that, that, you know, when we were gearing up for that and then we did not have it, we just thought it was another great event, um, teaming up obviously with the Park District to do a Saturday event. And then Sunday allowed the trick-or-treating on its own.
Great. Thanks for clarifying. Appreciate it.
Thank you, Alderman O'Brien. Uh, thanks, Manager Crumstock for that. It looks like Alderman Bessesi and then Veniziano.
I think you did a great job, uh, regarding the events. I think it's a nice, uh, calendar of events and I'm very much in support of it. I do have one question. Is there any idea of what the expense to the city is for all these events?
I'd like to direct that to Manager Crumstock, if I may?
We don't have an overall expense, because remember, some of these are fundraised. Some of these the community event foundation picks up. So there is no, even though the city budgets an amount, the foundation picks up. And it also depends on some of the additional vendors that are participating and donations that come in from a lot of businesses to support these events as we continue doing them.
Okay, because I do know that we use, uh, Public Works resources, um, on a lot of these. And I, and once again, I'm a hundred percent in favor of doing all of them. I'm just curious as to what it's, uh, uh, costing the city. So, so maybe at some point that can, can come up with some kind of an estimate. So, thank you.
Uh, thank you, Alderman Bessesi. Alderman Veniziano?
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. So, um, since I've become Alderman, besides garbage cans, the second most popular conversation I've had is bringing back Diamond Fest. And now this was before my time, but I've heard legendary stories about this. So I'm just proposing that it be brought up in discussion, obviously not for next year, but maybe the year after, is seeing if this is something that can be brought back. From my understanding, it was a very popular event in our community. And I feel like at this point, that's what our community is being known for and being, bringing visitors to is events. Um, so it would be a great opportunity, um, for our community. So I would just like for us to at least start having that conversation. And, and I think residents would really back it, because I think I hear about that more than garbage cans. So, thank you.
Thank you, Alderman Veniziano. Uh, Alderman Cannon?
Thank you again, Mr. Mayor. Um, in light of the conversation we just had about Halloween, for the last few years, I've been advocating us move the tree lighting ceremony to a Saturday. It sounds like we had great success with Halloween. Why wouldn't we have equal success or more for the holiday lighting on a Saturday as opposed to a weeknight at six o'clock? I've asked about this the last couple of years, most people don't agree with me. But in light of the fact that we just brought it up, I thought I would just throw it out there again. I also, I thought last year when we agreed to put the tree down near Public Works, that was going to be a short-term solution. And I realized that was going to become the permanent home for our tree. Uh, I'm kind of disappointed to hear that. Thank you.
Thank you, Alderman Cannon. Any further comments or questions from the council? Well, it doesn't look like there's any further comments or questions on the events or on any other topics that we discussed this evening. So in an opportunity to make this end before 11:00 or midnight, uh, I'll look for a motion by show of hands to adjourn. Thank you, Alderman Sanoyka, and thank you for the second, Alderman Bessesi. Is there any discussion on adjournment? Seeing none, we'll declare, please call the roll.
Veniziano?
Yes.
Bessesi?
Yes.
He asked this?
Yes.
Sanoyka?
Yes.
Cannon?
Yes.
Bud Matts?
Yes.
O'Brien?
Yes.
With seven in favor and then opposed, I wish you all a wonderful evening. This committee, the whole is adjourned. Take care, guys.
Good night.
Good night.